We know the action is that there's any issue with this or anything that's in there. This is assuming we're based in Arrow II of the building, getting demoed for a couple hundred thousand.
Okay.
Hey, where are you guys at?
Yeah.
So we've met at the committee and then with all these things. Um, I guess what we would, what we would like is, um, obviously the bigger the better is that provide the functionality, you know, allow those two holes as many events as possible.
Um, you know, just in trying to weigh the needs with the wants and things like that, I think we're probably comfortable at maybe an 11 million dollar ask, uh, for, to, to go to a bond. And, uh, you know, I, I think that's kind of where we would be at from the committee standpoint. Um, I don't know. Do you have any specific questions as far as the athletic side?
Do these numbers include everything to get it ready to, like the basketball hoops, the, the volleyball mats, all of that stuff, or is that all additional?
So the additional, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, from what you guys have figured out, but the additional would be your weight equipment. I think, I don't think that would be included, but it would include the basketball standards, volleyball standards, I would assume all that.
Yeah.
Great. So you have volleyball mats.
Yeah.
What's that? We do your volleyball mats.
Yeah. So the new basketball would be part of this package. It'd be kind of a book where you do your volleyball side, whether you put them in the floor or not, um, the place and everything will be a part of the tour in this, this side of it. The only thing that I could look at is that's not the good thing to do then is, you know, really kind of like what you do at the end.
So like the sound system?
Sound system isn't really a good thing this year.
Volleyball standards would not be included. The courts would be included.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, I mean, we would have the, basically with all of the, um, the courts in South, they would actually all line up. That's all.
But the hoops are gonna go up and down and up all in there.
Yes, absolutely. I won't put a gym without an office.
Bleachers?
Bleachers awesome.
Eric, what kind of bleachers?
Uh, right now they are a plastic optical one that you push a button and it pulls them out. Um, and color, you can pick whatever you want.
Let's talk about size. Are they good? I mean, are they, you know, you go to different gyms and you know what, some bleachers aren't very fun to sit on, some aren't too bad.
Yep.
And are there handicap accessible areas in the bleachers?
There is clearly handicap accessible areas in this space. So we'll, but basically when I'm doing this, once we finalize the location and how we organize it, we'll locate how many accessible seats you want within the layout of the courts here. Um, so like in Graceville, we added that and I think we added, that one had the accessible spots and one we just did up in the morning counter which is in Minnesota. Um, that one there, we add six accessible seats. And that's just modifying the transportation and bleachers and stuff. And add all the count of four which is in my.
It's hard to see, there are some pretty neat design features here too. If you look, there is a ramp that allows that to be handicap accessible to the top level. And it also provides a place for wrestlers to get conditioning and really any athlete to get some conditioning done. Um, the other thing I like too is these two locker rooms on the, on the south side, on the south end, um, your, your teams are going two opposite directions, which is always a good thing. It just eliminates potential problems. Um, and then I did, so I've been in very close contact with Coach Wagner as far as the weight room's concerned, you know, he's our weight training coach. And I think in all of the drawings we've seen so far, the weight room's been big enough and has full functionality for him. Um, I think on the wrestling side, this would be a really, really, um, I think impressive wrestling room, uh, compared to what the rest of our, any seat competition has in this area. Um, it, it, it sure would meet a lot of our needs from the athletic program standpoint.
Nathan, can you go down that path a little more?
Yeah.
Because, you know, a lot of our peer schools have built new facilities or operated.
Yeah.
What, what can we learn from their mistakes or what they wish they would have done?
There's been some with buyer's remorse a little bit because they didn't think everything through. I would say if anybody's been in the new dual gymnasium, that's one that I think they wish they maybe would have given it more space. Um, the, from what I understand, the, the bleachers are not very far from the, um, team benches. And nobody wants that. I mean, from a coaching standpoint or from an athlete's standpoint, I don't want, uh, what, what could be opponent's parents or your own parents, I guess for that matter, right behind your, you know, your huddle as you're calling a timeout and trying to talk through a timeout. Um, so I know that they've, they've expressed that they're not entirely happy with the way their gym turned out. Um, we've tried to, I've actually just talked to Mr. Squares today about that and we would make sure that we have enough, um, sideline space so we wouldn't have that issue on our gym. Um, what are some others? Uh, there, there've been some really nice ones built, there've been some that have some neat features to them, but yeah, all in all, I, I don't know, I, I think this one, both of the drawings really fixed a lot of our problems that we've got here.
You and I were talking about weight release today.
Weight release, so, Weight Release South Shore just, uh, put out bids for four new classrooms, uh, weight room and a cafeteria. And that was it. They, they couldn't even get a gym built with it and they were at 10.2 million. So I think their bids just came back here last week and it, it kind of floored their superintendent, but I think it was that high. So I think for our, for our costs that we have going into this, it's a pretty good bang for a buck for what we're getting in return. Um, I would also say too that, uh, with, with our costs, there are, you know, hopefully things in there that we can trim a little bit. I know Tom's alluded to some of them, but that'll let your, whatever comes in, I would agree, you guys decide. Um, I think we can try to help offset some of that stuff too with, you know, we can really hit the donations hard, uh, fundraising and stuff like that, but, um, we're, we're figuring high on everything. I just want to make that pretty clear that all of our estimates, all of our, our drawings, we're, we're trying to figure it high so we're not surprised later. We're trying to do our due diligence there as well. Um, parking's been an issue too. I know that's been brought up. Um, we really don't eliminate any usable parking. In fact, we've probably gained some. If you look at the exterior pictures in your drawings, we gained, I think it's something like 24 spots. I think I counted it. 19, 11, 30. We gained 30 spots on the south side of the armory. And we probably only eliminate, I mean, anybody that's driven down in there, we probably only eliminate six or eight spots. I mean, there's not, there's not too much, uh, parking available in that little corridor there. So we actually gained parking with this. It sounds strange, but it's, it's true. We actually regained parking with this design. Um, we would probably have the athletes park in that gravel parking lot to the south to just eliminate, I know how teenagers park, I know how they drive, um, you can drive red t-shirts, DC things. Let's keep them away from the main parking lot. So that would be a loading zone for the school buses to unload their athletes for the traveling team. And then it would be an athlete parking lot there too to the gravel to the south, uh, which means that all of this is for spectators. Um, listen to this.
Tom, somebody yelled out air conditioning a minute ago. Is the, is the new gym going to have air conditioning?
Yes.
So we wouldn't have to access the $400,000 alternate for air conditioning in the old armory? That is correct.
Yeah. And that's, and that's why I highlighted that one in the middle for you, that's an optional for you because the new one is 24.
Thanks for the clarification.
So that was one of the key things from when Nick and I were speaking with Tom, correct me if I'm saying the number's right here, okay? We wanted to find out what would it, you know, what does the new facility, just the new facility, how low can we get that number basically? And if we went with the 750 seat, just the new facility is 8.694. So that's just about as, we feel that's as low, at least from the buildings and grounds perspective, we could get that. Now, you still would have your design fee and your contingency fee, but then what we went in back and had Tom do is we wanted him to give us, for lack of a better phrase, a menu of what needs to be done to the main armory. Cause no matter what, the armory is 70 years old. We are going to have to update that someday, whether it be the roof, whether it be the boiler, uh, whether it be, uh, I understand, uh, some of maybe our sewage, our water lines might need to be updated there to the north.
Have to be.
So that's where we had, uh, that's the top part, correct, of what you've given us so we could go through and pick and choose.
Yep, correct. So worst case it's 2.3. Uh, if you just did, just when I highlighted in the background, acquired one, you're just shy of 900.
So then that way, I mean, if we're gonna be spending that money anyway in the next three to five years or whatever the timeframe is, it's just better to get that out to the public and everybody sees it. So it could be looked at as from, when Nick and I, and Nick, again, correct me if I'm wrong, it's more of when you have the design fees and the contingency, you're doing 9.8 for the addition and then you're doing another, uh, anywhere from a million to 2 million for armory improvements.
So some of the concerns I've heard from the community, of course, cost is always a concern. Nobody wants their taxes raised, nobody wants to overspend on anything, but I, I truly believe, and I say this from the bottom of my heart, if, if, we could get you guys a, a four or five million dollar gym, but you're not gonna be happy with it. It's not gonna do anything for you. It's, uh, it's gonna be bare minimum, it's not gonna be functional. And if that were the case, and we've talked about this as a committee, we wouldn't really be interested in even pushing that forward. Um, it just really wouldn't solve any of our issues. So, you know, five, six, seven million, it's, it would be great to get down to that amount and I wish we could, but it just isn't practical in today's world. Um, construction costs continue to go up. I've heard of phasing this thing up. The problem with phasing is you can get your, your A and B, but you don't get C, D and E. Um, that's always been my fear with it. It just seems like the, the other schools and communities and things like that that have done things in phases, some of the phases get left behind, they never get, they never circle back to them. Um, if they do circle back to them, the construction costs are gonna be much greater 10 or 12 years down the road when you get to those, uh, you know, the C, D and E, where you might as well have just done the whole thing to start with and be done with it. Um, so that's why I just, I think the, the right thing to do here is just throw this all in, in one thing and, and get, get it done and we can just enjoy it and just get back and get things, uh, get things good with our athletic facilities. Uh, we are falling behind other schools. And we do have needs, either not wants, I wouldn't be here if this was a want, this is a need for, for the schools, a need for our athletic program.
I'm gonna ask a tough question to the group here. Um, you know, we did, we went to the community meetings, we, we got input from the community and, and, you know, to me, the biggest thing that I heard back was, was, was cost and location. I never had anybody say to me, we don't need a facility. It's all been about cost and about location. And in my opinion, that's what the taxpayers have hired this board, voted this board in to make some of those decisions and then bring them, bring them a number. But while I do agree with cutting as much as we can, I want to be careful that we don't end up with a high school gym.
Right.
So I want, I mean, I'm gonna look you guys in the eye and, and ask you, with the pared down version, is it the right size?
The 700 seat one?
Yes.
I agree.
I would say a little bigger, go with the 1400 one, cause you, you commented on the age of the armory. I mean, you're, you're, 1400 seat gym, I mean, you might save some costs and fix up the armory right away and you got your future gym for the next 75 years and a 1400 seat one.
So, and I want you to be objective here. I mean, is, is there disadvantages with not only seating, but our, in floor space and functionality? You, you know, I, I, I don't care about, you know, I would like to have, I wanna know the facts. Like with option A, we've got, you know, the ability to hold three mats, we have the ability to host multiple net volleyball tournaments, whatever that is, I mean, let's hear it.
I just don't wanna do something or regret the size of it, you know? We talk about the Ipswich, uh, Minarbeater, they, they wish they would have went bigger, you know? And that's Ipswich. I used to live there. And that's not a big community.
Right.
A smaller community supports something like that. And I, I just think, community the size of Webster, I really hope it can get behind a bigger facility, I, I think.
You know, you used dual a minute ago as an example. I've been to dual. Beautiful. When you walk in, that place is just immaculate. And then you sit in the bleachers and right there's the teammates. I don't wanna, you have, you're forced to sit behind your own, own team. I don't wanna listen to that conversation.
Tyler, I know you've been in touch with the Parkston folks that just built down there. What are some things that they maybe weren't satisfied with?
So the Parkston addition is an auxiliary gym, a weight room and a new wrestling room. So very similar to what we're doing. And I'll, I'll tell you right now, uh, either of these certainly are option 1A would put their new wrestling room to shame. I mean, they got two mats in their wrestling room, but it's, it's wall to wall. There's no, no apron on the edge for, I mean, just a little tiny space on one side to walk through, but otherwise it's wall to wall. It's, it's tight. Um, their auxiliary gym, their new one, has this many seats. No seating whatsoever. It, it's literally just a gym and it, it, it doesn't have the hardwood floor, so there's, there's no games, competition, high school varsity level games gonna be played in there. They, they can't. Um, the weight room, I would say is probably the crown jewel of that whole facility. The weight room's beautiful. It's, if we ended up with what they got for a weight room, I'd be tickled. But the weight room and their new auxiliary gym share a wall that's a curtain. That's all, it's a curtain that, that retracts, so, you know, maybe if, if you were holding about, you know, you could do a, a youth tournament, say in that auxiliary gym, but then you got the weight room right next door, blaring music, who knows, whatever, slamming weights. I mean, it's, I know, I, I think if I was living in Parkston and I look back and see what they did, I think I would be disappointed in that. Um, I've talked to people in Lennox. Lennox is doing something similar too. They're doing a new weight room, um, very similar to, to Parkston's. I'd, I'd say Parkston's is slightly bigger than Lennox's new weight room. Um, they're doing a brand new auxiliary gym, which is, the footprint and the layout is almost exactly the same size as Lennox's existing competition gym, which I don't know if anybody's been to Lennox or seen their, their competition gym. It's beautiful. It's gorgeous. I bet, I bet there's 2,000 seats in there. And they're building an auxiliary gym, almost identical to their competition gym already. Um, so two, two communities, you know, Parkston's a little smaller than us, Lennox is a little bigger, but I talked to them, both of my connections down there, like, how'd you guys do this? Did you fundraise it, whatever? They said, no. We passed a bond and it passed first track.
The Lennox School had eight general rates contractors that had just, uh, showed the competition.
Eight contractors bid at that?
Eight, eight GCs that just, there was, it was very, there was a lot of competition that, so I didn't see the final results of it and they didn't do that part much after eight GCs.
I think that's getting to be a little bit of the norm here with the way the construction kinda is right now. I mean, look at, what did we have, five beds over here, you know, for the demo and, and remodel the O versus one over there. It's, contractors are hungry.
Um, from the volleyball standpoint, you know, I think of the spaces we have now, the high school gym, you can't play anything in there. It's strictly just practice. Um, and even in there, then it's one, um, one court. You know, in the high school gym right now or the armory, then we get the two courts, um, at the same time, you run into the aspect of having to tear it down, go into one main court. Um, you know, if you go with the smaller option for the, um, additional gym, you know, and from the volleyball's side, why, you know, you don't wanna go smaller, especially when, I mean, when you play volleyball, yes, there's the boundary lines, but, um, when you're transitioning to hit, you know, you, you go well past the lines. Um, some of the places that we go, our outsides are transitioning to hit and the fans are sitting in the bleachers. That's why they made that, South Dakota made the rule that you can't sit in the first bleacher, you have to sit up because half the time there's people there. And then if you're playing basketball and you go to dive for a ball, you run into somebody. Um, if we go with the bigger size, then, you know, we're not even gonna run into those problems. And in my opinion, if you're gonna do something, do it right the first time. You don't wanna have the should've, could've was. So that's from kind of the volleyball aspect of it. Um, we're gonna have 33 girls out for volleyball. Um, you know, we can do 33 fine in the armory for practices and different things, but it still gets to be a lot. Um, having the extra room, especially on the game days of having the two split gyms would be huge and tremendous for, um, not just our players, but honestly our fans as well. And, uh, just the overall flow of the night, I think everything would go a lot smoother. Um, the games would go smoother, different things like that.
It would help tremendously on basketball double headers too. I, I think that would help a ton to be able to, we get, instead of starting at four o'clock, we can start your, your, uh, sub varsity games at five o'clock. And I know it's only an hour, but it, it's an hour 10 times a year. Um, that does save some time. Um, one thing, this may be not a volleyball issue, but it certainly is a basketball issue. In the winter time, um, we are asking our athletes to have a, an early practice and late practice. And I know I've used this example before, but we've got athletes from Eden, we've got athletes from Wallace that on a practice, you know, practice night, they're not getting home until nine o'clock at night. They haven't started homework and they haven't eaten supper yet. Any of these options eliminates that. And we, we have to do something. I think that's a big need. Um, I think we've been doing that far too long, having late practices in the winter time. Um, we've got kids on the road, late at night, dead winter. It eliminates a lot of that. Um, so there are things just beyond even the functionality and things like that, the lack of space, it improves our, just our students' lives too.
Are you still thinking that the new gym is the competition gym? It's gonna be the main?
If it's the 1400 seat, I think we would have that be the, the actual varsity level competition games in there. Now, if it's the 750, probably not. Well, I was just gonna elaborate a little on that. I'm probably about to become the most unpopular guy in this room, but anyway, you said, we're gonna present a bond, which I think 90% of the people in this district, maybe even higher, think we need something and we need to pass a bond. And I'm fairly confident a bond will pass. What that is exactly, I don't know. But like you said, you present a bond, in my view, and you make darn sure the public's gonna accept it if you pass it. This stuff about, let's, let's go with this or let, I'll, I'll just pick 14 million and the voters vote it down. I'll, we're supposed, and I'm sorry, guys, I just don't think that's the way to do it. I think we present something that we are all confident is gonna pass. I, I, I'm concerned about a couple of things as a taxpayer, other than a, a school board member. Too much of it, too large of a project, I'm concerned for our general fund, that we can't afford, our general fund can't afford it. For a couple of reasons. Open enrollment is not our friend in Webster. Number two, if our enrollment stays the same or inclines, we're fine. If we drop even, and when you guys correct me if I'm wrong, we drop 20 students for one year, we're gonna be in trouble. If we drop 20 students for two year, 20 students is only 2%. I don't think we could sustain that and trust me, I've seen this happen. If we stay the same, I'm not too concerned, but I'm a conservative budgeter and I, I am a little concerned about those, a couple of those things. So I wanna make very clear that I think there's a, it's overwhelming that the public wants something. I, I'll say, I'll, I'll sit here and say right now, 14 million is not the warm fuzzies. I would, I mean, I, I know enough people in this district, I just don't get it at that price. I don't, I mean, I know you guys think that it's, and yeah, it'd be fine, but you have, the taxpayers have to pass it, so.
So.
I don't know.
I, I respect everything you're saying there, Mark. And as I sit here and I listen and I think back and I wrote some notes, you know, one of the things that we heard from the public was they wanted multiple designs. And so I, I think we're looking at two designs here tonight that are pared down a little bit from the two that we saw two months ago. And I, I think the, the building committee is working through some of that. Um, and I already talked about the fact that, uh, you know, same thing you just said, 90% of the people, and I would agree with that, think we need to do something, it's what, what does it cost? But, you know, I don't wanna build another high school gym that we can't use. And so as I'm sitting here thinking it, thinking and I'm looking at these cost estimates that we were just provided, you know, why, I think it would be a responsible ask to go to the public and say, hey, look, here's what we've done, we've pared it down, we've got two options here, and we're saying, let's go with option 1B, the cheapest possible option, and let's ask for 11 million dollars. And let's challenge the, the community in this group to go out and raise the rest. If the 11 were to pass, we'd have the bare bones minimum. And if there's support in the community to go all the way, we'll go raise the mon, they'll go write that, well, they'll go raise the money. That's my opinion though. I think, what I'm saying here, Mark, is I think we've done due diligence to get to this point.
So if you did that, Joe, if you challenged the community to get, would that have to be, when would they have to have that money in hand? They'd have to have it before, before anything was even designed, wouldn't you?
No. You could do that, like they did that at the pool. Um, the city did, when we first did the pool, we did not have the money for a slide. We didn't have the money for any of the, uh, play features. Those were all extras and we designed it, you know, for the bare minimum. Then if this, if we raised enough money, then we could have the option of doing the slide. And we did those as options.
This is gonna change the whole building.
Yeah.
With the option one or two.
Right, but you could do that then at the.
Aaron, I, Aaron's right. But here's the thing, if, if in my opinion, we were to go to the voters and ask for the 11 million dollars, let's say that, I don't know, is it a November election?
It has.
Okay. So in November, we get told yes or no. Tom, from November 1st, how long until we go to bid?
Um, I'm asking you guys when we go, it'd be as early as.
Is it three months?
Probably by January.
To me, that's the timeline when the board would need to know before it went to bid. Or I'm asking you this, can you bid it either way? So now we buy another month.
To, to a degree, what we do is that bid alternates.
Right.
Basically, as you're adding those options in, right, you can choose what options you sure want to be done specifically and we just add those options.
So, so Aaron, I think it's a, you can't wait till the end, but you would know by, you, you, we would need, the board would need to know by.
Could I ask Tom too, is there any add-ons on your financial sheet that have to be done immediately? I mean, to, for the design? I mean, I think that's what Aaron's getting at. Is there anything that, if you were gonna say, yeah, we want AC in there, do you have to, you know, that's.
To the, to the existing armory?
Yeah.
No.
Not to the existing armory.
We can, so you could do, this is where it kinda comes down to, is what you have for change order authority on that proportion of the project, but you can add a scope to an additional thing where we can, we can actually rebid, we can design that piece of it, have it as a bid. Again, I do this if you're looking at that, and design it as a bid alternative right away. You know that number and let's say by the end of 2026, you're going in there before the thing is completely, like, hey, we got, if somebody came in and offered 420,000 dollars, you can still accept that. hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you can still accept that bid if I'm behind the store. And it just allows you to add that to the scope. So that's where we would want to have a.
I mean, to me, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, I'm thinking, if you were to do an Airbnb, well, if you go with, uh, you got to screw it up, but if you went with option B, now you're almost forcing yourself to spend half a million dollars on air conditioning in the armory, whereas if you just went with A, you're pumping half a million dollars towards the cost of what you want. I mean, I, there's a lot, I mean, we just got presented with a lot of information here, there's a lot to absorb, but.
So I have a couple of thoughts, you know, Mark, you brought up a good point, and I think, I think I have the youngest kids in our school of the five of us up here.
We hope. Put that in the newspaper. We're not going to talk about that.
But I think enrollment is important to look at, but I think, what if we don't do this? What happens to our enrollment? Because we have kids that have options to go other places. Are we at risk of sending those kids somewhere else if we don't do this? And I, I see a lot of young faces out here with young kids and, um, they made a choice to be here in this community, in this school district, and I, I think they're, they're willing to invest. I mean, we're the ones, we're going to be paying for this in the long term too. So that's one thought, and this board invested in a master plan. I mean, this is one project. We're not done yet as a school. I mean, we have other investments we have to make too. And so, I, I do think we have to be careful how big this number is, because we can't kick the can down the road another twenty years on what could potentially be in this vacant site when that building comes down. So, I was just some, some thoughts offering.
I'd also throw out, if you want to turn to page forty-eight in your packets. So the public knows, you have a lot of questions, what does it cost us to operate the armory? And if you turn to page forty-eight, what we budget for the armory, it's under line number twenty-five, forty-nine, everybody's got that on top of their head, right, Lori?
I do.
I'm sure you do. Armory electricity, we budget twelve thousand dollars a year. Armory water and sewer, we budget one thousand eight hundred dollars a year. Armory maintenance and repairs, eight thousand bucks. That's probably what we've been doing for a lot of years. There's a reason why we've got to do some maintenance and repairs to the armory. Armory garbage services, twenty-five hundred dollars. Natural gas, eleven thousand. And then maintenance and supplies, twenty-five hundred. We do have one salary that is associated with that, so you do have social security and retirement associated with that. Our total armory budget is a hundred and seven thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. If you then look at what we bring in, and I don't have my June, was that June packet numbers? But I, correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, last year we brought in approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars in ticket sales. The city gives us twenty-five thousand dollars every year to assist with the management. So now you're at, uh, there's an accountant in here, so I'm going to make sure I get my numbers right, sixty-two thousand. We also have the key cards, which is right around ten, Lori, so we're at seventy-two thousand. And then we also have special events, where they do rent the armory and we receive those funds to help offset. Was that at twenty, Lori?
No, I would say.
Fifteen thousand.
A place that rents, that we get eight hundred dollars on, and then you add the other rentals throughout.
So that's, so now we're up closer to eighty-seven. In addition then, we also receive the money back from Kiwanis on concessions. Now, we're getting close to a hundred thousand dollars that we do receive in income in the armory. The armory is one of our close to break even. So, yes, I agree, we would have additional expenses if we add on space, but if our space is sixty percent, you know, it's still something that is very doable, and hopefully we would be able to increase our income. The other thing I look at is, when you started talking about volleyball, I think it is a big deal. When we built the armory in nineteen fifty-something, what was the number of athletes that were using the armory? It's men's basketball team.
That's it.
There wasn't any girl sports, they were out. There wasn't even wrestling at that point in time. So what else did you have? Men's basketball team, maximum of what, twenty kids? You know, between a varsity and a JV team at that time, maybe twenty-five? Now our girls volleyball team, nine through twelve alone, is thirty-three kids. And that doesn't count, then we also have a junior high program. And last year, they sent, what, did you say second grade girls did volleyball somewhere?
Um, third grade.
Third.
Yep, and then there, yeah, there was a group that did third grade, and then there was another group that did like fourth and fifth and I think maybe sixth, where they kind of did like practices and they would go to the Y and play as well. So, in that, in a sense, third through fifth, sixth grade of community members taking their time and having those kids as well, um, practice and use facilities.
So, you know, if we've got five hundred and thirty kids in our district, five hundred and thirty to five hundred and forty, and just half of them are girls and, you know, easy numbers, third through twelfth grade, those girls are all playing volleyball. It does affect a lot of our kids. And so I, I think that actually, operational wise, general fund, I understand about declining enrollment, but open enrollment tonight is at least our friend, as we added on another six students that we've got getting approved. And we've done those looks, we're usually on the plus side of open enrollment. Now, that's where I think it's important, what Nick is saying, we got to have the facilities to keep that way.
I agree, I mean, with everything you're saying, but I also agree with what Mark is saying. Cause if you, so you, the revenue we bring in at the armory, pretty much is a break even.
Offset, yeah.
Well, now, if you add on that additional gym, you're not going to double your, your revenue. This, the revenue's going to be about the same yet, but now you've got double, or almost double, the expenses to go, you've got all the additional expenses that go along with having another facility.
I don't know if you have to double. First of all, I mean, it's only about two-thirds of the sun. Yeah, so.
You might get more events in there, but you might be able to host more events in the army that can't host now, because it's getting used for a game or an event, or if you have this other competition gym, hey, now that armory's open, you can still host a wedding dance in there, you can still host something, or you could use it for stuff, or a mother banquet, or a funeral, or, you know, so.
And I agree with, I mean, yes, I think we're, this is the right, we need something. But I'm just, it's not the cost, upfront cost of the armory, it's down the road. We're already, so, what we pull out of capital outlay to transfer, from sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, there was nothing, and ever since then, it's been going up and up, and now this year.
But that's got a lot to do with teacher salary though, and the state funding.
But we're still doing.
So, but if, that doesn't matter, that's not going to change. You can, you can do. But we did, but we withdrew out of capital outlay in two thousand and eleven, twelve and thirteen, that's what the state of South Dakota says, fund your school. It don't matter, we still got to do it. We do. We have to, we have this in your budget pattern, so, I mean, you can complain about it until you're blue in the face, but it doesn't matter, we've still got to do it. So. Or else.
In the max, we can pull this like.
Or you got to sum the revenue we bring in.
Capital. So this year, it was eight hundred.
About nine hundred.
Nine hundred thousand.
Would it be responsible, and let's say, let's go down that road where it's double, would it be responsible for us to say that, look, track's falling off this year, that's going to free up a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the capital outlay fund? Can we utilize that to help these expenses?
Do we need another maintenance person?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, when you, that's a deep rabbit. I think we do, but I don't think it's just for now and there, I think it's.
Think it's up here.
District, not district wide, but school facilities wise, we need help.
It'd be foolish not to budget one. You have to budget another maintenance person. But again, I mean, what I'm saying, Aaron, is I don't disagree that there's going to be cost, but I don't believe it's, with all due respect, I, I think actually our general fund can do it. I actually think that we are in a very good, healthy position with our general fund. A lot of times when we are putting over that four hundred to four fifty, or that three hundred, or the three fifty that we've done, it's less than what we have budgeted for. And we plan on that. I mean, I think that, you know, the things that we look at is that we've tried to keep up with technology, we've tried to keep up with, my gosh, what was our, this year, Craig, was it the math system? Which one did we buy this year? It was super expensive, the new books this year.
Math, yeah.
Math, I mean, how much was that?
Eighty, you know, eighty thousand.
We're trying to keep up with those type of things, and I think the school is in a really solid position. Look at our general fund, every year, we've maintained it at that thirty-five? Thirty-five percent. We've maintained those reserves at thirty-five percent, which is kind of where the state wants us to have our target goal.
How is it doubling the cost of maintenance? Or.
I don't think it does.
Whether it's lights, water, I mean, maintenance on, you know, the boiler or whatever, you're kind of tearing down a turret right now, and that's kind of going down there, be more moderate. Maybe you do have to have an extra person down there, but you pay the expenses, I think, on double. Maybe you're transferring stuff that was here down to there.
That's a really.
In the near future, maybe you do build something up here now.
That is a good point.
I would say by upgrading the systems down there, you're going to see efficiencies that we don't currently have right now. It might not make up the exact increase that you're going to see if they're needing another facility or more square foot, but I don't think it's going to double. And as for adding additional staffing down there, I would bet if you got, you could easily get five persons to add, if you had to ask. One thing that I'm seeing with schools now is the materials that they're using. I mean, you're pregnant, it's only a cost war I'm guessing. We're getting away from the regular tiles, we don't have to wax, strip and wax them during the summer. Huge amount of maintenance cost is our labor. And that's partly what's difficult about taking care of the facilities, is they're, they're labor intensive because of some of the wooden materials that we're using. More and more schools are putting in a, what's all this?
They have an L E T type flooring.
Yeah, it's not the tile.
They do a new composite style tile, but they're waxing it.
And you just simply, you, you clean it with machines that they clean it with, and that's all you ever have to do, there's no stripping over Christmas, there's no stripping during the summer. And all of those types of things, we're seeing with the bathroom fixtures and the flooring and all kinds of things. So there, there are efficiencies, I think, you might see with newer materials.
Nathan, did you guys explore, do you have any numbers, ten, eleven, twelve million dollars, what that would look like for a mill levy?
Um, we, yeah, we did, that's, that's what I said earlier, I, I think eleven could get us there, and then anything we raise.
Get us where?
What's that?
Get us where?
Could get us a, a good functional facility and then.
What's it going to do to the mill levy? That's the question.
Assessment per thousand.
The, for, I got that here, eleven gets us ninety-eight cents per thousand for owner occupied.
Well, it's the same for.
Same for everybody.
Same for.
Yep.
On a bond, it's the same.
Same, same, straight across. So it'd be ninety-eight cents.
Ninety-eight cents. That's figuring like a pretty high rate, I mean, that's, that's at four point four percent, so, yep.
If interest rates were to drop, then obviously we're going to have.
Right.
Right now, four point four is the going rate for bonds for the state.
And I think we like that eleven million dollar number as a committee. It might not get us, you know, the, our biggest, best option, but I think we feel comfortable asking for that eleven million, because we can go out, put boots on the ground and start putting, putting in some work as far as fundraising, getting donations, grants, things like that. I mean, we do already have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in pledges and donations, and that was just Kate making a couple of phone calls in a week. That was one guy putting a minimal amount of effort into it. I think we can, with a little bit more involvement and effort, I think we can get, we can make up the difference with eleven million plus whatever we get to.
Again, I was on the playground committee, and a large portion of that, we also fundraised for. The community of Webster is very, you know, proactive and positive and giving and wants to see the growth. So I, I agree with Tyler that, you know, if we go out and we get more fundraising as well, I foresee those numbers growing, because we do live, live in a good community where, you know, we want that positive growth. And, I mean, I saw it firsthand, you know, being a little bit newer here in this community, being on the playground committee, I was kind of like shocked, like, oh wow, we got a lot of money, like, pretty fast. But it goes to show, you know, the support from the people in the community as well.
And I've said, we've got a very vibrant main street, we have a beautiful pool, we have a beautiful softball, baseball complex. This is kind of that missing piece, it really is. I think our school sports would start to fall behind more than, more than we already have, if we don't get something done here very, very soon.
My question to the board is, first of all, it's an action item, is that what the action is? Are we going to entertain a motion to go to a, a bond? That's question number one. My, my personal opinion, I want, I think we need the bigger gym. I think it's our job as a board not to look at today or tomorrow, but to be looking thirty, fifty years down the road. I want to challenge, not that this group hasn't already done a lot of work, but I want to be able to go to the taxpayers and say, we're, we're asking you for the least amount that we need to get this thing done. We're going to count on them to bring it the rest of the way. And, and this is a question, maybe Lori or Tom, I'm not sure, if we were to say, let's go for a vote, and let's say a vote gets passed, and then let's say the bids come in high, we still have the ability to put the brakes on and stop?
Correct. We do not call for the, a vote can pass, you don't take the bond until you want the bond, literally. So if we did a vote for the hypothetical eleven million dollars, it passes, the bids come in at thirteen, we don't take the eleven.
You absolutely. Make the motion to pass the board's for an eleven million dollar bond?
Oh, well, I want some time to think about this. I'm sorry, guys, I'm, why, why do we have to do it tonight? You don't need to, he just threw out a motion, I mean, he threw out. I guess you guys go ahead, but I'll tell you right now, I'm a goat tonight, so, I need time to think about it. But you go ahead. I don't think that's the way, anybody can always make a motion. Go ahead. Now, whether or not it gets a second is up to the rest of the members, and what I will tell you is that if we want to have a vote, we are now limited by state law, you only can do it twice a year. It used to be you could set a vote for whenever you wanted as a school. And so, if we wanted to do a vote, the next time it can be done is Tuesday, November fourth, is that the general election this year, I believe, Lori? Okay? And it's my understanding that we would have to have everything approved by the board by September thirtieth, am I correct?
September board meeting to meet all the deadlines.
So September fifteenth is our board meeting. So that's just, we would have to know for sure by September fifteenth, if we are going to go to a bond vote in November. Now we got a motion by Joel, do we have a second? Okay? We don't have a second, right now we can go ahead and table it until, do we want to bring this up at the September board meeting? Aaron, yes? Nick, yes? Joel? I'm guessing yes. Mark, would you like to bring it up at the September board meeting?
Sure, you already have four yeses.
Well, I got three, then I'll vote last. So if you want to. Well, I got three, then I'll vote last. So if you want to say yes? Why not? All right, I'm a yes. So we'll bring it up at the September board meeting. Before you guys go, is there any other questions that the board has? Because I, first of all, I do want to say this. Nick, you brought up a good one. You look at this room and, one, two, Matt's not that old.
I'm old.
That's right. Sorry. I do know what your birthday is. February something. All right, so one person here is a little bit older. The rest of the group, thanks for coming tonight. It is really nice to see folks that are in their early twenties, late twenties, maybe even early thirties, here tonight to try to set things right and do well by the community. It takes a lot of guts to get up and work through these type of issues, and I really applaud you guys for everything you're doing. Thank you. And I hope you keep doing it. I really hope that we can get something out to the public in November, and I hope you guys can go out and start talking to people, find out what the questions are, and answer them, and get the, get the facts out there, so there's not just a bunch of speculation. So that's all I was going to say. Is there anything else you guys want to?
There's one question on, so we can vote twice a year. Is it six months or just twice a year? It doesn't matter?
It is November, yes.
November, June. I think it's just your primary and general elections now.
So, Tom, like, I know Joel made a motion for this, so as a school board, this has to be a vote to the general public, which means sixty point one percent gets passed this thing. So as a school board, why would you not want to put it out in the hands? And I'm just saying this, why not put it out there and let the people see what they want to do?
I'll answer your question. I am pretty confident an eleven, an eleven million dollar bond will fail. I'm confident enough to sit here and say that, I'll be in the newspaper.
I'm confident enough to disagree with you, Mr. Hanson.
That's fine, you can. So I'm not going to get egg on my face and do that. And why wouldn't we put out a figure that I know will pass?
What's that number?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to get painted in a corner. I don't have that number. But I've talked to enough people, and I'm, they might be lying to me, but I don't think so.
I, I've talked to a lot of people in the district as well, both negative and positive. My point is, I think that this group and this board has done exactly what we've been asked to do. We've done our due diligence. I don't think I have any egg on my face. Sometimes you got to make tough decisions, and I think it's time to make a decision, get it out to the public, and let them decide. That's what they elected us to do.
I might have, I might have misspoke egg. I don't think egg on my face was the right move. But I do not want, I'll say, I do not want to see a bond fail. I think that's wrong. You'll get just what you got the last time, three votes and every, the gym, you got a project that is no good. I'm sorry, it's not, shouldn't say no good, it's not a good project.
So, I have a question.
Is it, is it only district members that can vote on this thing, or is it all Daytona residents? Just, you have to be registered to vote in the Webster area school district.
So, people in Bristol, they do not get any.
They do not?
Groton or Langford.
Correct.
Correct. We're just on a long here, it's good for. Here's Matt. Up by where me and Mark live, down the walls. Wabey's there. Because I just looked today, because I have rental property in Bristol, all that money goes to Groton.
Groton.
You're paying for their opt-out.
Yeah. That's why I have to ask, because I, I didn't know if it was county-wise, just because you have address in the county, you get your votes in the county or how?
This, this is less than the Langford opt-out, and this is less than the Groton opt-out. Our two neighboring school districts both passed the opt-outs, you know, the first time through, and they passed it for more. So I guess.
Clarification for folks, opt-out is for operating costs, and a bond issue is for projects. We're looking at a project, they're, they have opt-outs for operating costs.
You know, Langford is doing it for seven years. What was theirs per thousand? I mean, I think it's two something, double. And that's seven years. Here, we're looking at less than a buck, and I'm hoping we're talking for a hundred percent. I think it's a good investment. I think it's time our generation has to, has to do this for the community, so. That's where I'm at. I think it's a good thing.
When's the last time Webster area school was built a competition day?
Eighteen fifty-five.
Nineteen fifty-five.
Webster School didn't do that?
Webster Armory was built, yeah, you're correct. It was the state of South Dakota, the federal government, the city of Webster, and then we had a small slice of that. You're correct. We never built.
It was time.
It might be time. I don't disagree with you. Any other questions, comments?
Question from Mark, just, what, the, 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 the committee's coming to you with a need, and you don't like the, the cost of it. What's the, where's your, where's your mind at as far as what can we cut, what can we up or down for it? I mean, I, I just.
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I just.
Everybody seems, seems to agree something needs to be done, but.
What's that?
It seems like everybody agrees something needs to be done.
Yeah.
I like the eleven, you like thirteen, you like the two options. Like, that seemed to be like eleven, you don't think it's going to pass. Where do we, what do we take from, what do we take away from it?
I don't know. I don't know why you need fourteen hundred seats in a gym. That's just me. Um, in an auxiliary gym.
I think I can say a little bit to that, being a part of the conversations, Nick, you can add in, Nathan. Because I was one of the first ones, the very first time I heard of it, they had a gymnasium on, it's the size of the Armory. I'm like, well, what for? Of my very first take on it. You have to look at the purpose of the gym, and even though it's an auxiliary gym, and it could turn into a competition, it's, it's that size because we want at least two playing courts this way. And I even questioned the other day at our meeting, I said, do we really need a ninety-four foot basketball court? We probably don't need it, but it exists because if you want two actual usable playing courts, it gives you that ninety-four. It's not, that's why we build it for ninety-four foot. It's that's, that comes out of it because of the size we want for the others. And I'd say the same thing for the bleachers. The size of the auxiliary gym that we're looking for, I'm a former basketball coach, I would want minimally what we're looking at for the, the two basketball courts, which give you the ninety-four foot court. The space is available for the bleachers. Technically, the bleachers, in my opinion, are not our demand or our purpose. They come with the size of the floor that we want for practices and for other things that we're needing that for.
Mark, I hit that issue hard. I did. I mean, that was what I hit Mr. Squires pretty hard on for a solid half hour, forty-five minutes. And basically, he comes back with, bottom line is, if you're going to have these, these courts the way they are, that's the size. Now, you can choose to put in one bleacher seat or fourteen hundred bleacher seats, but the square footage is still going to end up being the same. Is that not what you basically told me?
Exactly. I've tried to reduce it down, and I can still save more.
And then otherwise, then if we start reducing it down more, then you do get to the point where unfortunately, there is no question, we all agree, the high school gym is an aberration. It doesn't work. You know, you can't, that's not a full court. The bleachers are out over the court, and it's just not a good thing. We don't want that.
So by not taking action tonight, we're robbing them of a month's worth of work to get out into the public. That really drives me crazy. To come this far, and now we hit the brakes. All we're asking is to go to the taxpayers with a number which we have responsibly gotten to, and we're asking for their permission.
But they can't go start and do that until after, we, until it's passed.
No, they should, they should start now, just like we did with the pool. Just like we did with the first, with the Bearcat pledge to build this, this pledge. You can have people commit their funds now, and absolutely, they can start fundraising now. They should with, no different than what we did with the track, no different what they've done with the baseball lines.
So what are you going to do, cash fundraising? Is that what you're talking about?
Pledges are cash, I mean.
Pledges are no good. You still got, you still got to borrow the money.
First of all, now, whoa, whoa, don't ever say pledges are no good. You should back up that statement. I mean, just back that up, because you just insulted anybody that ever gave money to the school.
Pledges are good, but we have to borrow the money first. You still have to, you should, you have to pay, you have to still do the bond. The pledges will pay on the bond. Correct.
Correct. But so don't say pledges are no good, though, Mr. Hanson, because that will fire me up. That, that's, that's a phrase.
It's pitchforks apart, I don't care, but that's, I'm a goat. They're fine, but you still got to borrow the money.
And if somebody gave two hundred and fifty thousand dollars already upfront, that's cash, which they do have in the bank. So they already have two hundred and fifty thousand cash in the bank. They have a hundred thousand in pledges. Yeah, pledges are a big deal. That pool had people give a hundred thousand dollar pledge, not one dropped off.
I was going to say, Lori, I reattest with the amount of money our district has received.
Donations or pledges.
Over the course of the last fifteen, twenty years, it's.
I guess I'll, I'll rephrase that. You still have to borrow the money.
Sure, for the pledge.
That's all, that's.
Hundred percent. That's why cash is king. Cash is always king. You got a cap, that lowers the bond.
This project, not so, has some, specifically, there's a community, basically a community that works.
Can't hear you, kids.
So a community center has grant funding that is available. I don't know if you guys use First District, but there is a grant funding source that you can actually apply for and get funds specifically for the different things that are already operating. I think you have the food pantry that's inside of it. They actually get significantly grant funding for them as well. So if you do any enhancements to their space, they can get funding for it. So if there is ways to do it, and when I say enhance it, maybe they get a freezer-cooler system and you're adding cost to that system. So, right, if they're finishing their space, there's funding that is available to see, both for the gymnasiums, for other spaces, so I, I know that just because I'm looking at for a, that there's opportunities to apply for that. And that, that money is sitting there, and they want to give it away. That's the funny part is, is there's not enough that will actually.
Well, I'd like to say the Webster School District has been pretty good at receiving grant dollars in the past, things from Act of Black and Lori. So can you get us in contact with First District, whoever these different entities are, so that we can be?
Beecock.
Beecock, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Does the city have to apply for that? Says they all?
I mean, you can have the city do it, but I believe the school can do it for it. You might, you might have to be both, I'd have to look and see, but First District or any other, people could help assist with that. But, yeah.
But again, if we were to, let's say, I made the motion for that eleven, if we were to receive grants, that could be taken up. Would that be taken away from the bond now?
You could do either or.
Either or. I mean, your idea, your idea of doing the eleven and saying, hey, go raise the additional part, I never thought of that before. You said that tonight. That was a really good idea. I mean, either way, I think it's, it's doable. Well, needless to say.
I don't think that, a little bit off topic, but just something to consider as we're out and about telling people about this. I understand eleven million is a lot of money, and we are asking people, especially our landowners, to get a lot more under those pay taxes. One thing I want to add is, of course, if you are a landowner or a farmer, your property taxes are a tax deduction. So if your property taxes go up ten thousand dollars, but let's say you file a Schedule F for your taxes, you pay self-employment tax, you're going to save yourself fifteen percent in self-employment tax and maybe another fifteen percent in ordinary taxes. So if your taxes go up ten grand, you might save three grand in taxes you actually just won't be paying a percent during the tax, or in real estate taxes, if that makes sense.
It does, and thank you for that. But just to clarify, I don't think there's too many landowners whose taxes would go up ten thousand dollars.
No.
Due to this project. I, I have polled, you know, I've got some actual tax numbers here on twenty-two hundred acres, and it was thirty-seven hundred dollars, a buck.
Well, then, it is significantly less.
I, I just wanted to clarify that. But your, your point is taken. You're absolutely right. It is.
So instead of a buck, a thousand assessed value, you might be down to eighty-five cents, or.
Yes, that is correct.
With a Schedule F, that's self-employment tax, you're maybe down to seventy cents. Now, is really what it ultimately costs you.
That cost, yep. Great point.
Appreciate you coming with that information.
Yes.
That's why we all go to see people like you.
Now, I don't want to laugh. That's thirty-seven hundred dollars for one year. Taxes.
Correct.
We're talking twenty years, multiply that out. For, I tip for farmers, you guys, I, I know I'm not popular in this room, that's fine.
Oh, come on, give yourselves some credit.
It's starting to, um, this is going to cost farmers money. It's going to cost them some serious money.
And it's going to cost farmers serious money, and it's going to cost business owners.
Some, but farmers are going to hit hardest. Agriculture is going to get hit. I'm in agriculture. I just.
Budget book.
It's just a little bit too much. I don't know. I, that's all I, I guess I said what I'm going to.
Just to be clear, I got argued. Agricultural land makes up forty-four percent of the Webster School District. Owner occupied makes up twenty-nine percent, and businesses make up twenty-seven percent.
Of the total value.
Correct, of the total valuation. Straight here in our budget, folks.
The only tax that somebody likes is another tax that somebody else pays. And that's a fact of life. And, I mean, whether you're paying federal income taxes is somebody that's working for, uh, they don't have any deductions, they're working eight to five job, or you're a farmer, or you're paying real estate taxes, you're paying sales tax, you're paying tourism taxes, I mean, that's just the nature of the game. I do think that we have, I, I'm just going to tell you upfront, I believe in investing in the future. My, my youngest will graduate this year. Carly will be a senior, that's my four kids through. And I'll tell you, I am more excited for the next twenty-five years when I look and I see like, you know, Tyler and Emily bring their young son, I mean, is, is that your son that's over there in the camp?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pumped about that. You're only in your early thirties, though, so we won't talk about. You know, I'm excited to see Lindsay Vogel in here. I'm, I'm excited to see the Spearing kids. I'm excited to see, you know, Tyler Lee and, you know, all of those kids up there that are swimming at these swim meets. We had two hundred people in town this week for the Wiley Open. Two hundred people coming back to Webster to play golf, and every one of those people are telling me how much they love it. And then you drive by the fairgrounds, and they're packed. What do they sell? Six hundred and fifty, uh, six hundred and fifty steaks the other night is what I heard? Seven hundred? You, you hear that they did seventy, did I hear this right? Seventy hogs?
That's seventy hogs.
And the lowest premium was six hundred bucks? I mean, seventy plus? I mean, you're right, Emily, Webster does, you know, step up. And I think there's some great things that are going on in the community, what they had with that baseball tournament here just recently, what they had with the wrestlers over in Bristol, what they did with the state swim meet. There's just a lot of good things. And so I'm, I'm for it. I mean, that's flat out where I am. I think we need to invest in. I'm hopeful that you guys can go out and figure out how to get another five for each of you that's showing up, because it will come down to this no matter what. We can argue up here all we want. It still takes sixty point one percent. That's the number. And if sixty point one percent, then it is. If it's fifty-nine point eight, then no, it's not. Any other comments?
Stay the course. Keep pushing.
I have one question when it comes to, you made a comment about interest rates going down, where that could go down from ninety-eight. Do you get to refinance that at all if interest rates do come down?
Yes, next year. So, yeah, well, first of all, hopefully we would call, let's say it passes. So if it passes November, first of all, we're not going to bid it until, you know, February at the earliest. Let's say January, February. Let's say you get bids in in March. I mean, you're still looking like the earliest you're calling for that bond, April, May timeframe. So if, you know, the interest rates drop a half percentage, you know, which somebody tweets out every other day they want it to drop a quarter point. they want it to drop a quarter point. I mean, if they end up dropping, that will affect it, yes, in a good way. Now, let's say we put it in at 4%, let's just call it that. In five years from now, interest rates have dropped to 2.75. It is common then for schools, communities, state government, they refinance the bond at the lower rate.
We have tried, we've financed a lot of projects and saved a lot of money in the last 20 years.
Then it drops it.
So then you can actually start lowering that.
Well, yeah.
Absolutely, you can find it to shave off years.
But do you lower in an annual year or do you check it off soon?
One of the two, you can pick.
Okay.
I think it has to drop at least about a point before it is advantageous to refinance. Maybe a half a point, otherwise there's fees and costs. I don't think they're gonna let you refinance at a half a point. I doubt it, I don't know. You probably don't want that about, I don't think so.
I think you might be able to, but I could be wrong.
You might be, but I, I'm just saying, it needs to be at least a half a point to.
But the point is, is that, you know, no matter what, if interest rates drop, I mean, for example, I mean, there's a push for interest rates to drop in August, in September, October. If they drop a quarter point, you can update that number, and it's gonna be less. Anything else we can answer for you? Well, 95% of you didn't talk, but we really like it that you came. So appreciate it, and if you want to stick around, we have a lot more fun at these meetings here if you want to stay. Or you can take off.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thanks for coming. Okay, moving on.
Yeah, let's roll.
Motion to approve the out-of-district busing agreements, it's a lot popular, with Wabbe and Langford. So move, Aaron.
Second. Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion?
We can't deny those.
No.
We can, but you lose.
We can, the states told us we can.
I don't, I don't like it.
We all don't like it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All approved, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the contract for Sarah Sick, Sarah Sick Miller as special ed parent. Thank you, Mark, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the contract of Brittany Lindy, food service.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, second.
Second.
Thank you, Nick, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to amend Jared Vergil's junior high basketball contract pursuant to the agreement.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, second. Thank you, was that Aaron?
Yep.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the resignation of Brianna Ridgway. Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you, Nick, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the resignation of Val Engstrom.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, second. Thank you, Aaron, discussion?
That just came in today, Joel.
It was gonna, ah, first out.
Just came in.
Good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Val, thank you very much, I mean, been, been here for a long time, and, uh.
12 years, I believe.
12 years, and hope things go well for you, and wish you the best, and, and thanks for everything you've done, Val. All right, motion to approve the TASC plan document. Thank you, second.
Second.
Discussion? Standard, no changes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve, uh, food service procurement bids with Performance Foods as primary, Cashwa as secondary or based upon availability. Other vendors will include Prairie Farms for milk, Earth Grains for bread, and Coal Paper for supplies. Thank you, second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Can I do volunteer coaches as one?
Well, we have to do the procurement plan first.
Oh, I'm nuts. All right, motion to approve the procurement plan as presented.
So move.
Thanks, Joel, second.
Second.
Thank you, Nick, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Now, you can do one motion for volunteer coaches.
I got that through quick, all right. One motion to approve volunteer coaches for Jared McClurg football and Matt Bungarn football.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mark, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve food service prices of adult breakfasts at $2.95 and adult lunch at $5.15 for, uh, 25, 26 school year. Thank you, Aaron, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve open enrollment applications 2603, 2604, 2605, 2606, and 2607. Thank you. Second.
Second.
Second, Nick, discussion?
Are they you?
Pardon?
Are they you?
Um.
Return.
Yes, all but one. One is moving, one is our student moving out of district, all the rest are under.
Busting?
No.
All, the transportation's all taken care of, yes, a couple from Wabbe that will get on the bus, uh, from their stuff.
We do stop at H and R, so it's also anything that we need.
Charlie, so, okay, got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to declare surplus property at little to no value, four printers, miscellaneous cords and cables, 60 desktops, 45 laptops, 108 Chromebooks, 30 iPads, three LG panels, seven Promethean panels, one adding machine, one server, 12 headphones, two Chromebook cards, 40 access points, four splitter boxes, and partridge in a pear tree.
Where did the adding machine come from?
George, George, room. Uh, thank you, Nick, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion? I know you can't get value for these, I've tried.
Yeah, don't go with it. And there's no that one, too.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the handbooks for school year 2025, 2026.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mark, discussion?
So I provided the high school handbook notes and revisions, and I brought this to you last month. Um, there's nothing significantly changing from what we talked about. Uh, the tardies for high school will not start over every quarter, they will only start over each semester. That's what I decided to, to recommend. Um, I told you that we would, we would expect that seniors would be in the building at least two periods per day. They're already aware of that, even though I didn't share a city buddy. Um, dual credit and online courses, uh, we do have some criteria for incoming freshmen. Uh, this is specifically for students who are ninth graders taking online courses through e-learning at Northern. Um, we wanted to have a little bit of our own standard there. Even some of our best students, um, it's not that they're failing, but they're not doing as well as they probably should be. So we, we want to make sure that we are holding them to a higher standard, uh, prior to signing up for those online courses. And, uh, we believe that that will help with some of those. Grade point average course weight for, uh, dual credit classes is the only thing that's really looking at changing. Um, I did decide not to include music and PE in, um, just the conversations that I've had, even though I, I did some, get some compelling arguments in favor of including music in it. Um, I, I just felt like, uh, it's, um, the system's been, in my opinion, working. The repeat courses, repeat credits, um, the, uh, the grading for them is, is a little bit more, um, objective than subjective, you, you have a little bit more of performance and things like that that, uh, can, can influence the, the grades. And so, um, I, I just have decided that I'm not, wouldn't recommend we include it. So it will stay as it has been. Uh, it's been that way since I've been here for 24 years, and so I don't know at what point it changed, but it hasn't been included. Um, the dual credit classes, what we're proposing there are the things that are in gold at the bottom, and I'm not gonna go through it all because it's, it's not a mathematical, uh, um, situation, or, or some sort of algorithm or anything like that. It's basically just trying to clean it up, um, and addressing, um, three credit classes versus two credit classes versus five credit classes, uh, and, and not have so many. Ri- right now, the current system that we have has goals, um, a GPA weight increase in it and a credit point increase, meaning we give more credits for those. And we thought we could just eliminate, um, uh, both of them happening and just use one, and then prorate the, the credits. As I've suggested there, um, the one to two credit class would be a .75 GPA rate. Um, three credit is the most common class that we see for students having college scores. And so that's kind of our standard. And we prorate smaller with .75 below that and higher for those to take one of those. Um, and then in the bullying, teasing, and making threats, one of the, uh, the biggest criticisms from parents of, of students who are victims of bullying is that we don't do anything, and we hear that all the time. We both believe that we do things, we investigate things the best that we can. And our bullying policy was basically written so it looked like we had to give detention on the very first incident. And, um, we had been practicing our own, uh, authority to say, yeah, we believe that that deserves detention, or no, it doesn't. And so, um, I just added a comment at the end, determined as determined by the administration. I don't think it's gonna change much how we do it. Um, we're still gonna investigate things the best that we can, um, and then go from there.
Dr. Block, on that, on that point, what I noticed is the parent notification, is that happening with that first offense? Because I see it in the text, like, uh, on the third.
You mean like if a, if a, if a student is, is written up for bullying, do we notify parents?
Yes.
Yeah, we notify them. Anytime that I deal with anything that's bullying, um, I notify parents because I want to give them a note that their kid's being accused of being bullied. Because I think that's part of the solution for, um, so.
Yeah, and I, well, I try to do it via email so that we have record of it.
Yep.
Sometimes it warrants a phone call, though.
Okay, questions for Dr. Block?
We're just talking about the high school one right now, right?
I sent you the elementary middle school one also.
Is that part of this conversation right now?
Yeah, sure. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look through it or not, but a lot of mine were kind of similar to what Dr. Block did, but I didn't make as many changes as he did. Um, we just added a counselor part, we didn't have a counselor part in there before. So that, that covers Mrs. Norton's area.
The, the one thing I noticed, and it's stricken on the discipline notice, staff may also call or communicate through email or text about the discipline. And I'm glad that that's Xed out. I think it should be a phone call or an email. I think the texting has, in my opinion, needs to stop, because so many people get on these things.
Yeah. Well, I've had times where I, I just start my investigation, and then I'm, I'm already questioned because the kids have, text mom and dad. Like, I haven't even started the investigation yet.
Well, that brings up the next one.
The door is open. You gotta do it. So, yeah, that's what phones create.
Well, you wanna bring it up, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
These things.
So what's your thoughts?
Cell phone policy, do we, we do not have one, correct?
No, absolutely, we do.
We do.
How, they don't, they're lying.
It's.
Our policy is that the students, um, well, number one, you don't even have cell phones.
It's the same as what I was.
No, we haven't had a problem in the elementary. Maybe. Very minor, if we have.
Meeting students with phones in the elementary. Our middle school, high school kids may have them, um, between classes and at lunch. Otherwise, the expectation is that they put them in the cubby.
Like those pockets up there.
It's like a cafeteria holder, they put them in there when they come in the classroom. If they don't have one of those, they put them on a table that's got a grid. Um, and it's just teacher discretion, so we have some that are a little bit, um, more lenient, I would say. Um, but our expectation is that if we tell you to put the phone away, that's a violation. If you don't, take the phone. So they are permitted to have them between classes and at lunch.
At the high school level, is it the same?
Yep.
Seventh and eighth grade also.
I, you know, I think we're, as a society, it's, it's getting so carried away and, and, I mean, I, I read an article and I sent it to everybody, the, the state of North Dakota banned cell phones, but did you see that? I think I emailed it to everybody. And, uh, you know, I, I found it interesting, just some of the takeaways in there, just the social aspects of the kids now having to interact with each other versus during their free time being on their phones. And, and I, I don't like it, I mean, I get, as a board member, I don't know about you guys, but I get text messages, but then when you go and talk to the individual face-to-face, it's just. It's a whole different tone, it's a whole, you know, and so I, I think, I think at some point, we're gonna have to look at it. The Bella Belle ban.
I read that article, and I don't know why the gal said what she said, but regarding the lunchroom, I give the kids a bad time if they're on their phones. I would say, well, you put those crazy things away and talk to each other. Um, but I can tell you that the high school lunch still gets loud enough that we get upset. So they're talking to each other.
Okay.
Um, now they're with their phones and they're talking. Um, and that gal says, you know, you know, a year ago, our kids were, nobody was talking, it was silent in our lunchroom, and now this year, they're, they're talking and laughing and throwing food. And I don't say they're throwing food, because she's not good at that either, but I, I'm not seeing that. The elementary is very loud at lunchtime, not for me to like, I'm not an elementary person. I'm just like, niggas. And the middle school, high school, they're, they're socializing and talking at lunch. I believe they are.
Oh, I am, too.
These are part of it, they're part of it, but.
I'm walking around, I'm looking at their screens, and I'll chime in if it's sports or hunting relating or.
I think we've actually seen a little bit of, uh, of a curve back to more socializing, especially at lunch than we did 10 years ago. 10 years ago, they were all like, I literally, I would say, put those things away and talk to each other. Now I'm like, hey, we're quiet, we can talk, but not so loud. So I believe they're socializing happy. Is it all healthy? Well, that's difficult for me to determine.
This is becoming a bigger deal. I, I read Joel's article, and just so happened, there was a segment, segment on Good Morning America that same day about, it was a fairly long segment about these things. I, I, I personally see kids nowadays are losing communication skills. Communication skills are one of the most of, I think we're gonna see one of the most important things coming in people looking for jobs.
That's already here.
It's already, I personally don't see a problem with, they do not need these cell phones in school. I, I guarantee you, you and I, we can put them away for a while. Yeah, you might not like it for a day or two, but those six hours they're here, there is no need for them. They should be learning, and they should be talking with their friends. They don't, they don't need to have these in school, in my view. That's my view.
Were we one of the last districts to actually allow cell phones? Jim, if I recall right, I was on the board, and we finally let them.
And I would, it was because me, because I didn't want to get into it.
Yeah.
And everyone's like, Jim, you're acting on this, you're not doing this, and I just hung on to it. But we were basically doing what we're currently doing now, is where we, except for if we saw them, we couldn't escape it.
Right.
I mean, if we saw them, we couldn't escape it. And so that was our compromise, is not to go full-blown, you can have all the time, but try to manage them. My, my personal experience, you know, I'm willing to support a ban if that's what we want to do as a board, even if we want to do it as a state, but I still believe that our best efforts are gonna be trying to keep, teach the kids, and, and it's a challenge for us as a school to teach them, to use them responsibly, because they're not going away. And we can do whatever we want during school. And I'll say this about reading, we have parents that are frustrated with reading in school. How often do they read with their children at home? It's always our fix, and, and it should be. This is where it starts, that's what education is. Um, but the cell phone is the same thing. We can ban them all day long, and come 3:30 or 3:15, you're gonna deal with the issues. The majority of what you deal with, with bullying and teasing, doesn't happen during school on these. The majority of what you deal with, with bullying and teasing doesn't happen during school on these.
You know, I was just thinking about that and the majority of them happen over the weekend or outside.
You know, the night, two in the morning, we're dealing with those things. But it's, it's not usually during school. And the reason it's not is because we have a policy, they know what it is. And they know that by now, like if you bully on this thing in school, well, we've got you because it happened in school. At the, the first assembly every year, I talk about those responsibility, responsible not having them in the restrooms and being nice and all that other stuff. And I remind them that we're going to get you whether it happens during school or not because you do foolish things on these. And we don't get them all the time, but we try. Contrary to what some parents think, we don't do anything about it, but we do, we try.
Well, and there's a huge majority of kids that are using it correctly. And I hate to punish them for using that correctly. You know, use it in between your classes or, or during the lunchtime. And you can communicate with mom or mom or dad might be communicating with them. So on the flip side, yeah, there's some doing a great job of using them correctly. But yeah, I'm kind of with Dr. Block too, it gives me a headache with some of the things that we deal, especially with them coming into the school. Will that, if we get rid of cell phones, will that eliminate that? No, it'll still come to us. If it affects education and what's happening in school, we still have to deal with it. So I don't know, yeah, I'm on offense.
The stuff I see in the legal system, usually the more serious with cellphone or cyber, it's, it's not during school hours.
Right.
But the schools still have to deal with it because the students still are in the same class. It's happening on the weekend, it's happening at night. And then the schools have no power over it. But then, how do you, now how does the school deal with it once the kids are in the classroom? And I, and I think that puts the school in a tough position, but that's what we're happening to see, that's what you're seeing them dealing with across many school districts.
And I would suspect we'll see more of an influx if we get rid of the cell phones in the office, kids wanting to call home. Something changed or.
What do you think, Nick? Doesn't seem like it's a problem.
I guess for me, I'm, I'm not going to carry the torch, but if you guys as a board said you wanted to do a ban, I'm all in and we'll go for it. I, I just, I believe that we can, we can work with the system that we have. I, I, maybe what I'm saying is I don't know that we would see the benefits that you think we might see or other people think we might see. I think a lot of the issues are still going to happen outside of school. And most of it, you don't want to hear this, most of it is how the parents are parenting with the phones with their own children. That, that's what it comes down to.
In our push with the counselor, Mrs. Norton, we're trying to get her in the classroom a little bit more in the elementary and the middle school. And, and I know she covers those things about phones and using them correctly. So it's, yeah, we are educating. We could educate more, but parents need to do that.
So guys, you want me to turn on next month or you want to see kind of what the feedback from the community is? Aaron, what do you think?
Well, I'm not opposed either way. Say if you ban them, they can't even bring them into the school or they have to be in the locker?
Well, that's one of the things that you run into too. I actually know somebody that's a superintendent of a very large district in North Dakota. And he's in favor, it was part of the production or the promotion of it. But he said it's a really, really difficult thing to do when you get into the size of the school districts, you know. And I'll just say, how do you with a school, a high school with 1,400 students, how do you enforce that? How do you enforce it with 1,400 kids? We're not that size, I believe we could easily do it. And I say easily is that there'd be some heartache and there'd be some frustrations. We would have frustrations as administration and staff. I think one of the better things that comes out of a ban is somebody else up here said there's a ban and it's not the teachers that are, that are the ones that are being. For me as a, as an administrator, I look at the teachers and say, you tell a kid to put the phone away, that's the expectation. There's no questions, there should be. Put it away.
Was it a year ago that Gettysburg, like, weren't they one of the first in South Dakota to have like a?
Two years now.
Yeah, like a, a total ban, like they put them in a.
They put them in a bag at the beginning of the school year or school day and then they're locked and then those can't be unlocked. I don't know what the kids do with them, if they leave them in the office or where they're at. But you can't unlock them until they go to their homeroom teacher at the end of the day and then they have something that unlocks them. So there's no access to them at all. Now that's Gettysburg, Gettysburg maybe has 250 kids, we're at 540 this year. Now granted, elementary is not going to be an issue, but there's some logistics there.
What about these things, smart watches?
I don't know that they've, I don't know that they figured out how to address those.
I didn't think about that till now.
Yeah, they'll change to those.
I mean, I can, I can type, I can reply to texts on this.
And kids are already using those in our classes when their phone is up there. I mean, it's.
Everybody asks if this watch now.
Yeah, just.
They actually have to tell time on it.
Do you remember what's their?
Yes, I have, yes, I have the numbers.
Could you do, because I know some teachers, you know, at the end of their classes, they give them time, they can be on their phones if they want. Could you make it so they can't even do that, just strictly between classes or lunch?
That's a, a good point, but what those teachers will argue is that I use that as a privilege. If we, if we have a good learning environment, don't have a lot of issues, then I say, okay, you know, in the last five minutes, you have your phone. Some of them do do that. Now, obviously, there's, there's always going to be some that are, they're not keeping track, but they all don't care and they just let the kids be on. I don't like to hear that, I don't, if I know about it, I address it, but I'm sure I probably don't.
Well, maybe we just need to have the public text us, let us know what they think. And we can look on our phones and. Well, trust me, they'll find me.
I don't know how beneficial it would be, but we could send out some sort of survey and you can get an idea of where the public is at. Just sent to, to, not district patrons, but just to parents.
I'm sure if we send it to district patrons and kids answer.
Oh yeah, the kids get those, those messages too, by the way, the alerts, so we might see a, a really
Great response.
Strong response, no, don't ban them, be fine.
I think we've kicked the can, we'll hear shortly.
See what happens later this month?
I, I wouldn't get all surprised if, if the South Dakota legislature addresses it as well.
I think it's coming, I'm not willing to die on this hill, it doesn't sound like our administration is real concerned about it so.
Yep.
I mean, I, I, I am definitely think it's important, but that's not something I'm going to.
I think we got a good handle on it, is what I'm hearing here. And this all started with my concern about parents texting teachers, they had nothing to do with the kids.
Well, it's as much as we've asked cell phones, it's for everybody in school.
Yeah.
All right, so.
That was on handbooks.
That's on handbooks. We, we got, we do have a motion on that, so do we have a motion, we've got a motion to approve it, right? Any other discussion?
What's that?
Handbook.
Yep, which by the way, I know I give really, really boring lectures to kids at the assembly the very first day. I tell them every year, Gettysburg doesn't have them, and I can go through this, and you know what, North Dakota just banned them. You guys want to make sure that you still have opportunity to use them when we do allow you to use them. Don't screw it up.
Don't screw it up.
Yep. Now, some of the kids don't even listen to that, so.
They're not taking it.
They're on their phones while they're talking.
I'll, I'll remind them, the middle schoolers that lifestyle, so.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Superintendent report, Dr. Block.
Okay. Back school barbecue is Thursday, we have teacher in-service tomorrow, we're starting. We'll have employee training, which includes Title IX, sexual harassment, all that stuff. We have new teacher orientation, this is one of the small schools we've had for new teacher orientation. And when we say new teacher, it's both pairs and teachers, we only have two people. Normally we have five to eight people every year that are new, so that was a nice, smaller.
Yeah, and that's just to add that new opening that we now have, I have a lead on a person, so hopefully things will happen here pretty fast, just FYI.
Part of our in-service, elementary's working on curriculum for math as they prepare to start using that information. Secondary on Thursday is going to have EL, which is English Language Learners, will have that. We're doing a book review this year. Well, we do one every year, I've made it voluntary the last couple of years, but we're requiring it again. The book that we're reading this year is Autism Out Loud. And it's written by three moms who raised autistic children. And so I think it's going to actually be pretty good. I actually saw it on CBS Evening, the morning news, and I was like, hey, that looks like a good title. I read part of it, it's, it's a pretty easy read, I think it's going to be nice for our staff to maybe learn some perspective from the parents' side of things regarding autism. And I think those are the types of books that hopefully they're not too frustrating to read and too, too disappointing to read because it's actual stuff that they have to do, but it's something that's enlightening to them and they can gain something to, to working with kids and working with parents.
That could be very impactful, that's.
So I think it'll be a good one. And if we can find other books like that, you know, Down Syndrome or other, other situations that we deal with, with education, I think those are good things to do. I do let them have a, an easy read, a fun read every now and then, like every other year, I try to get some, but this is what we're going to do this year. So, and then Gavin Sanus was in last week. I like his idea, and this is something that Chad Mattson brought up a couple of years ago when he first started here with the, at the end of his group. They have a dual credit EMS class. It's not specifically dual credit in the sense that when you take this course, you get credits at USD or you get credits at Dakota State or something like that. But it's credits that can be transferred or accepted into one of those universities. What I like about what Gavin has proposed, and I love the fact that it's a young person that's doing this stuff, is he's proposing a, an EMS cadet program where you don't have to take it for credit, you don't have to attend EMS. Where we can incorporate it into our senior, senior experience class. Or we can have students that can do an internship as part of one of their periods during the day. And maybe they can, they can actually ride along in some of the events. The only thing that I have a concern when I talk to him about is we have to make sure that we don't, in allowing our students participate, this gets you guys into an issue with head, headless. And then he even talked about, I think he's time to look at Newtown, he's, I think he's been doing a lot of calls in Brookings and here. So Gavin has already seen a lot of things. One of my concerns is what will our kids see? And he said that there's already a program in place in a couple of schools or a couple of communities, Lemon was one of the examples. And he said, when you have calls that you know are maybe going to be a little bit more graphic than what we want kids to see, they don't go with it. Or if they do show up and it's more than what they expected, they, they just sit in front of the seat, kind of hang out while the professionals are taking care of it. So I was all for this, I think it's something we'll, we will certainly implement and give the opportunity for the students. The EMS class is usually $850 to take the course, but it's a discounted rate if you participate in a program like this, it's $350 for the course. I think that's an excellent opportunity for some of our younger students to get a little bit of a taste of, of healthcare. And it might, might open up some doors for, for other opportunities for healthcare that they're not familiar with. So. That's it.
Okay, questions for Dr. Block? All right, thank you very much, Dr. Block. I kind of like that EMS program.
That's super cool.
Besides my son, but it's a legit deal.
I'm going to try to convince my daughter to participate in an S and C initiative.
I mean, you look at, look at our EMS personnel here in Day County, they're, they're not young. I mean, Paul Peterson is a great guy, but how many years has he been doing it, 40? I mean, it's, we need to have some young folks step up and if they don't, we're going to be in trouble, so I hope we can get on board as a school. He's working with the state and I think he's going to the county commissioners next.
He used Lemon as an example, according to what he was saying, they have, the last two years, they've had between 10 and 13 students participating in Lemon, I'm like, that's awesome.
Okay, principal report, Mr. Case.
Kind of along with the handbook, I had a group get together. This group was interested or some of the teachers brought to my attention that, hey, for attendance wise, we want to see improvements. So they got, we got a group together and we're actually coming up, they came up with an incentive program. I don't have the deals with me, but we'll get the information out to the parents. It's just going to be like a, like a classroom incentive where each month, I think they're doing it each month, where the highest percentage of those that show up for that classroom will get some type of reward for that.
If you use your cellphone?
So we'll, we'll try it and see how it goes. Talking about the playground, Mammoth, we, we certainly, the group that got together chose a great company to work with. I did not even request this, but we've had some problems with those mounds out there, some seams have been showing, some turf has been coming up. I got a call in June and they said, we're coming up to redo the mounds. So they just completed them on Saturday and I went out there and they, they looked great. So when they first did them, I could kind of tell the seams in here, in them, and now it's pretty hard to see the seams in there. So, and, and it wasn't because of destruction either, it's just the kids love those mounds a lot, they're playing on them and it was just wear and tear. So, and they even fixed, fixed the turf around the carousel also. So just part of the warranty, so very good group to, Mammoth is a good group to work with, great piece of. Oh, we had bathrooms redone in the south bathroom. We had that type of floor put in, we didn't replace it with tile. We chose a darker floor, it looks pretty good, we had new partitions put up there. Also in the boys bathroom by the elementary gym, we had partitions put up there. And also partitions, which we didn't have before, in between the urinals. And those look pretty good in there too. Other than that, yeah, Dr. Block, we're hard at it tomorrow and Wednesday's off, they have that option to go to the NSU seminar over there and then we're back on Thursday for barbecue.
Speaker at NSU is the kid whisperer, Scott.
Scott somebody.
We've had staff members that have participated in trainings at DSU and other places across the state in the last five to eight years. And have said nothing but positive things about it. This is just a quick seminar, so it's not the actual training, but I'm, I'm hoping there will have some staff members. I purposely schedule our in-service days on Tuesday and Thursday as contract days so that they are able to go to Northern State if they wish to, so it's a voluntary thing, it's not their contract day. We do provide transportation for them, they're just to go, so that's, it's really, it's free for them. I plan to go and I, I look forward to this.
One more thing with that Go Math series that was $80,000. We are going with the same company, so it shouldn't be that hard of a transition. You know, they changed a few things, but we have the in-service tomorrow afternoon for, for K through five is who it's for. So I, I, it should be a fairly easy transition into it. You know, it's just getting to know, to find the resources, how to use it. So that should last us, do we do a nine-year contract on that, Mark?
Eight.
Eight, so that'll be with us for eight.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Case? Thanks, Craig. N E S C?
Updates in the packet, you can see that from the last meeting, I'm still getting up to speed. So I'm assuming you got the numbers for the budget we passed?
Yep.
So.
I think it's, they're fully staffed, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Your pathways here is, I believe.
I believe they are, right.
We've been calling it center base forever and it's changed.
Oh yeah, it was pathway.
Pathway's a set of center base.
I'm getting better at it, but I still, still stay center base.
Okay.
It's a lot, it's more acronyms.
Oh. There's a ton of them, yeah.
Stay tuned.
And it is okay, Nick, to stop and ask and say, can you explain what that acronym is? Because most of the coordinators will just sit there and just, I don't know what they're talking about, until somebody will ask. So it is okay, I encourage you and everybody else to just ask.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Buildings and grounds.
So we're still working on the 1950s, getting that taken care of. I, I had a panic attack on Friday, I'm not going to lie. And the reason I did is because I realized we have not relocated the. I realized we have not relocated the, the pipes that are in the north, in the ceiling of the north corridor that's no longer going to be there. Those have to be relocated into the high school gym. And so, because they didn't happen over the summer, I don't know why it didn't, so I'm trying to work with the folks. That's going to happen during school. I'm not happy about that. I've explained that to the folks and I have no idea like how long it's going to take, but I mean, my estimate, and I'm not the person that works on that stuff, I would say it's going to be at least a, I would say a two-week project. Because there are two pipes this size that come out of the boiler room, they go through the, the music storage area, and they go through the wall and then into that quarter, so they're above that, that quarter. They'll have to terminate them, go up in the storage room, through the recast into the gym, and they go up again and tie into the ceiling, and go all the way to the west and come back down, and so, yeah, that should have been done during...
So, simple question, who's the architect, engineer, whatever, how could they not, how could they miss that?
They're going to blame it on me.
Well, that's a bunch of bull, that's not your fault.
Well, no, they will blame it on me because, well, they should have been here. Those are the outside of the project things that, you know, I didn't remind them and I didn't get after them and I didn't yell at them or whatever it is. Same thing with the, so I'm frustrated, I'm not happy. Once I realized that, I'm like, okay, we really should have been on that. Now, I don't know if they would have been here to take care of it or not, had reasons to not be here, but. The plumbing for the pump room is, is in place, the concrete is done, that's, I think they finished that on Thursday, so that cures on Friday and day and over the weekend, so I don't know if the tiling's going to be taken care of in the hallway for that. That's minor, we can still use the hallway, it's just not finished tile. So, there's a lot to do. I would say that what we need to get done as a school district, we're on target or ahead with Kelvin in comparison to the contractors, so. And that's what I'm going to say to them when we have a meeting, so. I'm not delaying you, our district's not delaying you, it's your schedules that are going to happen. So, I've already sent an email to the staff members that it will affect, high school special ed is right, right by that hallway. The flex room, we have some title things that go on in there with middle school title. The middle school special ed is close enough that they're going to be, you know. And there's some stuff that's going to be part of the demolition that we knew was going to happen. So when we have the work that's going on, tearing down the garages and filling in the boiler room, our, our pathways, classrooms are right next to that. So we may have to consider, if it's too loud or too disruptive, we may have to consider a different location for them. And we'll see. But I've just asked those staff members to be mindful that it's going to happen. I don't have a timeline. Prepare your staff and your students the best that you can for what is, what will be occurring during the, the time that we have, construction, demolition, vibrations and noise and everything else. Other than that, football team and cross-country and volleyball players were all here, not all of them, but a good portion of them were here. All of the freestanding weights, all of them were removed from the weight room downstairs, carried up the stairs, carted out and put in storage. They actually tore down one of the big racks that, that we need to store, and the other one is partially tore down. So that stuff's looking all, all go in storage. Still don't have the mats taken care of that are in the wrestling room. We need to get those cleaned, rolled up and looked at as to where we're going to go. I will tell you this, that when I look at those mats and the weight of them, it is my recommendation that, that we, we go to the baseball field, to their building, if that's, if that's what we can do. I believe that's our, our best option. I don't, I, I still haven't come to grips with it and don't understand why it's, it's such a distasteful option for the wrestling program when they can put their mats down and they can leave them down every single day for the eternity of their high school program. Now, it doesn't help with the little kids program, but when, when the baseball team needs to start using that facility, we can actually put mats in the armory because basketball's done. We have solutions. They're not easy and they're not convenient, but I, I really believe that is our best, our best option. Mr. Case and I have talked about it many times, if we have it in high school, they're going to have to roll up the mats every single day. At one point I proposed that maybe we look at getting some new mats, bringing the competition mats here because they're easier to move, easier to set up, easier to tear down. But I just look at and say, do we really, is it smart for us to spend $30,000 on a new set of mats for that convenience when we can leave the mats down the entire season? If this is a two-year or a three-year situation, we're going to be moving those mats down there once, the armory again, and then putting them in storage. So you're moving them three times per year over the next however many years it could be. It's not convenient, but I believe it's, it's our best option. So that's where I stand on.
In my opinion, that's an awesome, it's an option. We got that option. We got this option. And like you said, when we get done with basketball, the armory's an option. We just got to get into it, just figure it out.
What we're fearing is the disruption that it will have having the extra mats in the gym all the time because we go, how many times have we said that gym's not big?
Right.
I, I just fear that every time there's an assembly that I won't have, I'm going to have to move them. Maybe not because they're laying out on the floor, but they're in the way and then, you know, we're running a school. We are running a school and we have a lot of activities that we have to run in the building. I just, if we can prevent some of those, those conflicts, I think it's valuable to do that.
So that's, that's the best, I, I mean, I think that's the only option. What do you want from, do you want something from us for...
I'm just letting you know what it is and...
Yeah.
Either support it or you don't, or, that's, that's where I'm at. And Nathan, if I had, we've had this conversation, I, he has said that the coaches are not in favor of that, the wrestling coaches. I haven't spoken to Bo or to Wade either one regarding it. I did talk to Wade, it's been several weeks ago, and at that point, he was not in favor of it, he would rather be in the high school gym, but gosh, the more I just look at it, and I have to look at the big picture, I have to look at the large picture, I, I just, I believe it's, it will be a better situation. Again, not convenient, not easy.
You good with that, Nick?
I'm good with defer to staff. Aaron's up.
Good with that? I think you got it pretty universal then. I mean, Jim, go ahead and if that's the best spot, then that's, you and Nathan start working towards it and that's where we got to go. Okay? All right, buildings and grounds. All right, now we got to our first reading and it's basically our spectator fan code of conduct and also our activity, Western Area School District Activities Communication Guidelines between a parent and a coach. Just open that for discussion.
Yeah, hopefully you guys had a chance to read it. I, I received information from Clark Willow Lake, Wabbe Summit, Watertown, Aberdeen, Huron. And so it's, I will say that it's, it's mostly stolen from Clark Willow Lake. There is, was the one that I liked the, the most. I did take a little bit of Watertowns when it comes to the communication guidelines that you can expect, but then I also stole one more thing from Huron because they had a rigorous Watertown and Aberdeen. One of them had an additional point that, that I added to it, so it's a combination of things. I don't have it on the, the letterhead, but the spectator fan code of conduct, this is for any sort of family, it can be a student, it can be an adult, it can be a community member. And then the other one is the parent coach guidelines of communication. We've had issues with both of those situations unfortunately in recent years. And so you guys asked for us to put together a policy that had consequences that were listed. I did change it up a slight bit from what the, I think Clark Willow Lake had. Their second offense was it was still the end of the season. My very, my mind goes to the worst case scenario. Well, but there's one week left in the season.
Or you do it during the...
And I'm like, screw that. If you've got a second fence and there's only a week left, you're going to get more than a penalty a week. That's where I'm at with it. So I changed it to six months. Calendar, school calendar, sometimes. I figure if you're on your second fence, you stay home for half a school year, or a half a year, maybe more than, it's more than half a school year. I've never, I think I've been reasonable on it with people and I've worked with folks, but I have just gotten to the point where if you can't behave as an adult, you don't belong to the, and we have a right to say you don't belong there. It's just that simple. And I don't care if it's spectators or parents dealing with coaches. We can raise the standard and expect the standard, yeah. If we have this in place, I, that must impose it.
You may like the athletes taking home, so parents see it or anything, make sure they see it?
You know how we disseminate it? I could send it out so everybody gets it via an email.
It's getting disseminated tonight though. I was, I mean, you can do that. I read it, I thought it was pretty good.
We did have the, the fall athletic meetings and he did show these, or he, he talked about them, I don't know if he had actual copies, but he did say that we have drafts, they're going to be a first reading at this, at this meeting and then a second reading. And I will tell you this, that I'm willing to impose these. If we have an incident that happens before our September meeting, Craig here, sue me, that's what I would say, sue me. You know, I, it just, it's, it's frustrating to think that we're dealing with this. We shouldn't have deals.
Absolutely. It's a little more tolerant than I would do, but I'm, I'm willing to live with it. It's better than what we got. I think it's plenty tolerant myself, but...
I can live with it.
I mean, if you guys have discussion, do you want to tighten it up that we can certainly, that's what the first reading and second reading is for, you can view and discuss, have some conversations with some folks out there if you think that need to be tightened up, we can tighten them up, meaning we can make more stringent...
So would we post this somewhere, like at the armory or here with, with a snippet of this via our...
Well, that's what we say about dissemination. Probably what I will do is as soon as it's, as soon as it's approved, we can send it out via our calling system and I can attach it as an email so that every district patron gets it.
Can we put it on the program somehow, so...
Yeah, I'd be a little worried for that.
I'd be worried, yeah.
And what I would say to that, I mean, you go back 20 years ago, we used to have the parents sign the handbook. You know what we had back then? Well, I didn't sign handbook, I didn't read it. I don't care if you read our handbook, our handbook is our rules. And that's, you know, don't debate what we have for expectations or standards simply because you didn't know what they were. I, I think that's a lame excuse. So partly says, yes, we can disseminate it, we can send it out, but even if you don't know about it, the expectations, you behave as an adult.
First time it's used.
Yeah, the first time it's used, it's pregnant, you get it, get it out there.
And it'll happen.
We'll make efforts for people to know and, and know what it is.
Okay.
The people at the flex won't find, well, no. I tell you.
All right, so that ends Buildings and Grounds, first readings.